Ladies and gentlemen, we need to call to order the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, and tonight we'll call on Commissioner Coggan to lead us in prayer, and then Commissioner Ely will lead us in the pledge.
Please bow. Our most gracious and heavenly Father, we humbly approach your throne this evening, God, thanking you for this day. Father God, we are a broken people, living in a broken world. But God, you are an awesome God, an all-powerful God that we serve. Father God, we pray that you use us each and every day as citizens of this county, but as citizens of your kingdom, to slowly, God, put this world back together through you. Father God, we ask this in your son's name. Amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Hall.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
President.
Commissioner Bullen.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Commissioner Daniel.
Twenty-one present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Commissioner Farley.
Mr. Mayor, I may come motion approve the minutes as mail.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Jernigan, did anyone have any corrections or additions? There being none, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Tonight, we have one person that has requested to make public comments. Mr. Donald Todd, please come forward and give us your name and your address.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. Strengthening Tennessee's State Sovereignty. Senate Bill 3498, introduced recently by State Senator May Beavers, was adopted by the State Senate. One of the reasons for introducing this bill is to amend certain Tennessee statutes relative to health care. But the principal reason for proposing this amendment is to prevent the federal government from misusing the new Federal Health Care Act by interfering with the constitutional right of every person within the state of Tennessee to be free to choose or decline to choose any mode of securing health care services without penalty or threat of penalty from any public official or from even the federal government. Her bill is known as the Tennessee Health Freedom Act. Many Tennessee legislators appear ready to stand up against any effort by the federal government to deny Tennessee the right to be exempted from the new Federal Health Care Act. These legislators, including Senator Bill Katron and Representative Joe Carr, support the citizens in our fight to maintain Tennessee's states' rights as guaranteed to our states by the Tenth Amendment to the Constitution. Senator Beaver's proposed legislation is not the only example of how the state legislature has adopted a fighting mood, but also HB 3433, introduced by State Representative Mike Bell, has made very significant progress in its move toward final approval by the State House of Representatives. Representative Bell's House Bill is identical to Senator Beaver's Senate Bill, and therefore it also is entitled the Tennessee Health Freedom Act. In order to protect and preserve the rights and property of the residents of Tennessee, Representative Bell's proposed bill calls for quick and appropriate action against anyone, including the federal government, who may violate any part of the Tennessee Health Freedom Act. In addition to the states' rights issue that the Federal Health Care Act presents, Tennessee legislators are also deeply concerned about the multiple millions of dollars that the Federal Health Care Act will cause to be exacted from our states. We here in Rutherford County should be very concerned because the out-of-control deficit spending by our county will make paying our fair share of the federal health care costs a greater burden considering the $565 million debt, including interest, which as a county we owe. I see tax upon tax in our future, county, state, and national. So, it is good to see that our state legislators are taking action to prevent the Federal Health Care Act from further bleeding the pocketbooks of the citizens of Tennessee. We would appreciate you, the county commissioners, doing your part also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Okay, next, we recognize Commissioner Coggan for elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all have received a list of applicants for a notary public at large. Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Secondly, we need to fill four vacancies on the Equalization Board. The Steering Committee received two applications for that, that being of David Adams and Loughlin Urie. We moved to approve those that night, but also in addition to those, we had Albert Nelson and Mr. James Baker. Actually, as a point of unfortunate oversight, they turned their applications in on time on that Monday, but as a point of oversight, they were not taken to the Steering Committee. I believe Mr. Taylor was off that day, and so they didn't get opened and therefore presented at the Steering Committee. So, they were in on time, and, Mr. Chairman, I move for all four of their approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Any discussion? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thirdly, we need to announce three vacancies on the Emergency Communications Board, and fourthly, appointment of Judicial Commissioner Savon Cole. Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
Motion second on Mrs. Cook. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. There is no unfinished business, therefore we're ready to begin reports on our standing committees. You have a report from the Purchasing Committee. Do we have a motion concerning that? Mr. Schaefer, a second by Commissioner Cook. Anyone have any questions on that? All of you in favor of that approval of the Purchasing Committee report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, Mrs. Ely. Commissioner Ely, we'll have time for 20 minutes of budget financing investment.
Item J-2A, General Fund Budget Amendments, and we have general fund budget amendments from the Correctional Work Center and Employee Benefits. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Miscellaneous Correctional Work Center from the miscellaneous gasoline line item $6,000 to the Correctional Work Center gasoline $6,000. From captains, $20,000. Pest control, $1,800. Utilities, $35,000. Employee insurance, $25,000. Undesignated fund balance, $38,200. To other contracted services, $120,000. This is to cover estimated medical expenses to Southern health partners, and also for expenses for meals provided by ABL. Employee benefits, from undesignated fund balance, $16,000. To unemployment compensation, $16,000. Resolved this 15th day of April 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Daniels. Is there any discussion? Okay, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2B, Ambulance Service Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. We have increased revenue for emergency medical services, other charges for services, $4,518. Increased expenditures in that same amount going to overtime pay and other related benefits. Resolved this 15th day of April 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Did anyone have any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2C, A Resolution Authorizing Agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Health. This is our annual agreement between the Tennessee Department of Health and Rutherford County. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Health, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, that effective July 1, 2009, Rutherford County shall appropriate a total of $603,222 for the support of the Rutherford County Health Department, with $474,847 being direct local funds for which Rutherford County shall not be billed, and $128,375 being appropriations for which Rutherford County shall be billed. Resolved this 15th day of April 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Does anyone have any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2D, A Resolution Approving Grant Contract with State of Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration for a Three-Year Stop Grant for the Sheriff's Department. Whereas at the regular meeting on March 11, 2010, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution authorizing the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, to execute an application for a three-year stop grant through the Office of Criminal Justice Programs for the purpose of hiring a domestic violence investigator for the Sheriff's Department. And whereas Rutherford County has been notified by the State of Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration, Office of Criminal Justice Programs, of a three-year grant award for the period commencing on July 1, 2010, and ending on June 30, 2013, in the amount of $131,457, which requires a 25% local match in the amount of $43,821 over the three-year period. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration, Office of Criminal Justice Programs, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to accept the Three-Year Stop Violence Against Women grant in the amount of $131,457, and requiring a 25% local match to be used to hire a domestic violence investigator for the Sheriff's Department effective July 1, 2010. Resolved this 15th day of April 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second by Commissioner Schaefer. Does anyone have any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2E, A Resolution Authorizing Medical and Dental Administration Renewal with Cigna Healthcare as the third-party administrator. This renewal with Cigna passed unanimously through the Insurance Committee. It was forwarded to the Budget Committee and passed unanimously through that committee. Mrs. Miller is available to answer any questions if you need her to do so. Whereas the Rutherford County Medical and Dental Insurance Administration renewal is due July 1, 2010, and whereas for the medical administration renewal, Cigna has proposed a decrease to the stop-loss premiums, but the stop-loss limit will remain at $380,000. Excuse me. Whereas Cigna has also proposed the addition of two new disease management programs, Cigna Healthy Pregnancies, Healthy Babies, and Cancer Care Support, at an additional cost of $41,507, to be funded utilizing the saving in the stop-loss premiums for a total annual medical administration cost of $2,295,668. Whereas it is anticipated that the addition of the Healthy Pregnancies, Healthy Babies, and Cancer Care Support programs will generate additional claim savings estimated at $71,666, with the actual expected cost for the medical administration being $222,200. And whereas the annual cost for the renewal of the dental administration will be $121,000, which reflects a second year of a three-year rate guarantee. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents for the renewal with Cigna Healthcare for the medical and dental administrative services for Rutherford County's health insurance claims, including the addition of the Healthy Pregnancies, Healthy Babies, and Cancer Care Support Programs effective July 1, 2010. Resolved this 15th day of April 2010. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jordan, second. Commissioner Williams.
I've just, one quick question. This is a renewal. Was this bid out, or was it not bid out? Or was it supposed to have been bid? Could it have been bid?
We can let Ms. Miller answer that, but I, Lisa, would you like to address that?
We bid, we bid every three years.
So, this is not the time to bid it out, or it could have been bid?
This is not the time. This was not the time.
Not the time to be bid out, okay.
Other questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2F, Resolution Awarding the Health Insurance Dependent Audit to Socova. Whereas the Rutherford County Benefits and Insurance Committee requested proposals from firms to conduct an audit of the eligibility of dependents covered under Rutherford County's health insurance plan. Whereas the proposals of two finalists were presented to the Insurance Committee, with Socova being the selected firm to conduct the audit, with a total project cost of $102,17. And whereas the audit will be conducted in two phases, with the county being audited in the first phase, and the Board of Education being audited in the second phase. And whereas the audit will include an amnesty period, an audit period, and a silent grace period for employees to respond, Rutherford County will receive an analysis of the results and a final client report, as well as advice regarding how to better control the eligibility rules to avoid similar issues in the future. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute a contract with Socova to conduct an audit of the eligibility of dependents covered under Rutherford County's health insurance plan, with a total project cost of $102,17. Resolved this 15th day of April 2010. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Discussion, Commissioner Williams.
I just had a couple of questions about this. One, the new health plan that's just been approved on the last part of March through the White House, changes the ages and the times. Has that been figured in and reflected in looking at this? Because I'd hate to go through this process, and I was just reading up on how the eligibility had changed on that dramatically, and more people are going to be put on there.
Well, it does increase the age for which the dependent children will be covered, but that won't really have any bearing on this.
That won't have any bearing.
Whether they're technically qualified to be a dependent or not.
And this just seems like a lot of money to spend on something that, just from the outside, would appear that we could do it in-house. So, I'd just kind of like a little bit more explanation on that if I could.
Well, we'll have to call Ms. Miller up to explain that, but I think it's pretty clear with the expected return, this is nominal cost. And I don't think that we feel we have proper and complete enough experience to do this in the appropriate way to gain the best investment, return on our investment. And in fact, with Ms. Miller leaving, we certainly don't.
Oh, I wasn't aware she was leaving, but...
Since we've done this, we've just discovered that as well. So, I don't think that we're in a position to do this in an appropriate way, and I think this is the best use of our dollars, and we'll get returns that far exceed this, as high as the state of Tennessee got in excess of eight percent of the dependents were found not to be appropriate. Commissioner Jordan.
Mr. Mayor, I certainly wouldn't dare challenge you on any figures whatsoever, although this figure does seem really quite high to me. I would agree with Commissioner Williams on that, and maybe we could do this in-house, but I will certainly accept your explanation there. The, it just troubles me, the, I'm not certain that I understand, do we, I want to be very careful when I say this, do we assume that we have ineligible, we are insuring ineligible people? Is that what we, evidently, we must be assuming that, because for whatever reason, I know there's a lot of reasons that could happen.
Yes, we are, but I think every other entity, private and public, that has done this, has proven that to be the case. Repeatedly, it's happened, and we have anecdotal evidence that shows that that's happened all over our other municipalities, counties, and even our state of Tennessee.
I'm troubled by the use of the terms, but I don't know what else you could say. Amnesty period, an audit period, and a silent grace period. I know what those terms mean, but I'm not sure I understand how they apply.
If it would please the commission, with your permission, we'll let Ms. Miller come up and answer those questions more definitively.
That's certainly fine with me, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Would you like, do I need to...
I'd like to make, put that in the form of a motion.
Make that motion that we, and Commissioner Black, all in favor of that, please say aye. So, Ms. Miller, would you please come forward, and you heard the question, I believe.
Good evening. I have Jim Kelly here with me from Socova as well. So, if there's questions that I can't answer, he certainly can.
So, step up a little closer where they can hear you.
Sorry. The purpose of the audit, of course, is to find those dependents who are not actually eligible to be covered under our plan and have them removed. Now, we would like to think that we do an excellent job of verifying eligibility, and that we'd like to think that we don't have any of these, but we know that sometimes there are cases where dependents are left upon the plan. In some cases, people get divorced, but they leave their spouses on, and there's no way for us to track that. If they don't remove the spouse or the children that may or not have been under their eligibility, then we have no way of knowing that. People can sometimes leave their children on when they should take them off, and that, so there's possibility here that we could have, you know, four to five percent, maybe greater, of dependents that are ineligible. The state recently found eight percent when they did theirs, which was a big surprise. I don't think they were expecting that much. When we did our calculations to determine what the return on this would be, we assumed a very conservative four percent, and the return on investment isn't small, it's huge. It's like eight times the cost of the project. So, for a $100,000 project, if we found four percent, we would return almost $800,000 to the county by managing this process. So, that's the need for it. Now, the terms, the amnesty period is for people to come forward on their own after they know that the audit's going to start, and remove their dependents themselves, without having to be us to request for verification. Usually, what they have found when they do these audits is that about half of who they're going to find are the ones that come off during that time. Then the dependent, the audit actually starts, and we will notify folks what they need to use as verification, and these include tax forms, they can include birth records, and some of it is very, very specific, and that's where the expertise of the audit team comes into play. In addition to that, they're very well educated in this, and then the dependents will be calling, they'll be calling Socova. They won't be calling the county to meet these requirements, and then they will be guided. If they can't provide those requirements, these folks have the expertise to send them to areas where they can find the documents. Say someone doesn't have a birth certificate, or they don't have that certificate of adoption, these folks have the expertise to send them to where they need to go to get those documents. So, it's meant to be helpful to the dependents, and that all goes on during the audit period. Silent grace period is simply a time when we know people aren't necessarily going to respond in a timely manner, and we want to be sure that they have as much time as they need in order to be able to respond appropriately to this. One of the things that these folks bring to the table is a data model that allows us to set up experts within every division of the county, and it has real-time attachment where they can go in and see who in their department has responded and done their audit. And that way, when it gets down to the closing, we can literally go to those people individually and say, "We need you to complete this audit," so that no one is left out and didn't know. And again, in this particular audit, we're going to do two phases. We're going to do the county first, and then we're going to do the Board of Ed later on after the summer's over, so that we're not losing anybody because of their summer time. So, that's the purpose, those are the definitions. Can I answer any other questions?
I appreciate that very much, Ms. Miller. Of course, you're very aware that evidently you will not be here, and it's entirely possible that I won't be here either. But, this word amnesty period, audit period, silent grace period, which you explained very well, by the way, all three of them, a period can be anything, it can be a week, a month, a year. Clearly, those audits are going to take quite a while. I would assume you're going to, well, someone will notify our employees by mail directly about the amnesty period.
Absolutely.
And we're not, well, we are dealing, is this a fair statement, that a number of people that are possibly ineligible for our insurance, they are still being insured by us by, mostly by an error of omission, perhaps on their part, maybe our part, but certainly their part. The child has moved, grown, gone to college, gotten married, they've never changed. And I was trying to remember on the way up here tonight, whether I ever notified, or my wife did, I was never on the county plan, but my wife and I, I assume she did, you know, I don't know. I don't have any idea. We may, they may still be insuring them up to my wife's retirement, I have no idea. So, I think that happens to a lot of employees, or they adopt a child, maybe, and they forget to call, a lot of, there are a lot of scenarios, aren't there? You get married.
Right, yes. Now, we manage, we try to manage the child, the aged-out dependents to the best of our ability. Our current plan document says that if they don't go to college, then they age out at 19, and if they do, they age out at 25. And we do require documentation after age 19, that they're in an institution of higher learning on a full-time basis in order to do that. But you'd be amazed how many, sometimes, that we just don't know about. People can bring dependents on during open enrollment without any proof. That's the time that it's open enrollment, and if they bring on an ineligible dependent during that time, then we're not necessarily going to be able to know about it.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Other questions from Mrs. Miller?
Commissioner Johnson, and then Commissioner Daniel.
Mrs. Miller, do we currently require social security numbers for our dependents?
We do not, but this audit will include those, because it's going to be a federal mandate as of 1-1-2011 that we have that information, and so that will be included in, as part of this audit process.
Why didn't we require it before?
That's just not something that we've ever requested. The claims are paid under the employee's social security number, not the dependent's social security number. So, what we have always requested in the past has been the employee's social security number.
I may be missing something, but it seems like this would be probably three-fourths, at least half of the audit findings would be social security numbers, and you would track that down to prove whether these dependents were eligible.
Well, and I can't think of too many health plans that have requested dependent's social security numbers in the past. That just hasn't been used as an identifier. But now, with the new law going forward, it's going to be a requirement, and so we will have to collect that as part of the, as part of the audit process.
Well, I'm not highly schooled in insurance, but to me, as a layman, I mean, I assumed, and I think mostly everybody else assumed, that we had the social security numbers to keep everything in line. I mean, it just seems like we're going to pay somebody now to do something we should have already been doing, and that may not have been the norm, but I'm glad we're finally going to get on board.
Commissioner Daniels.
My question addresses a different part of the situation. Do we have, how many employees that we know of have eligible dependents?
How many employees? We have six thousand eighty-five dependents on the plan.
Okay. Well, now, with, how many people do you have in your office? If you applied everybody to it, it'd take you a long time to go through them all, would it not?
It would take, it would take a long time, and again, we don't have the expertise in order to send these folks who might have problems providing the necessary documents to where they can go to find them.
So, we're gaining the expertise and the manpower, if you want to call it that, by this agreement, if we adopt it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sandlin?
Mine was, mine was just on a different light. I hate to see you leaving. I was trying to remember how long you've been here, and you've brought us a long way in the insurance field, and we're going to miss you. I didn't know if you was retiring or going to work for somebody else or whatever, or how quick this is going to be, are you finishing out the year or what? But I just found out, I mean, when you said something just a second ago.
We just found out about this last Friday.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I...
So, April the 23rd is her last day here.
I wish you the very best, but I hate your leaving, because I think you've been an asset to the county, very much so. But then I got to thinking, well, I hope you're not going to work for any of these two companies that we've just reviewing, so...
I'm not.
Okay, well, that's, that makes me feel better too, then.
Any other questions of Mrs. Miller? Commissioner Sparks?
Real quick, is there any consequences for employees, county employees, that may have someone on here, ex-spouse or something, or a child?
If they do not remove their dependent during this audit process, we do have a fraud clause in our summary plan description, that their benefits can be terminated if they have perpetrated fraud.
How is that communicated to the employees?
Well, that's, it's in our plan document, so...
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, it may say it in a booklet that's sat on someone's shelf for years, but how is that communicated throughout the county, whether it's the school board or the county general?
When we develop the scope of the project, and we haven't done that yet, because we haven't approved the vendor, but when we develop the scope of the project, that will be, if that is the way we want to take it, if someone removes their, does not remove their dependents, if we determine that they have perpetrated a purposeful fraud, and we determine that's what has happened, then it will be communicated as part of the materials to the employee, that that's a possibility if they do not remove ineligible dependents.
Yes, ma'am. What Commissioner Williams had mentioned, how come this couldn't be done in-house?
Well, again, there's a certain level of expertise that is required, and they bring that along with project management. The data capability here is immense for us to be able to track who has completed this and who hasn't. It's very important to remember that we have four thousand four hundred approximate employees on this plan, and in order to make certain that they are all meeting the needs of this audit, we need to be able to track that very closely. And as the time ticks down towards the end of the audit period, it's critical that we identify those people and reach out to them, so that they're not left behind in this, and that's part of the capability that this firm brings to this.
When will the audit be completed?
It's a five or six-month project.
Is it, when, when you look, just guessing from your expertise, your experience, how much savings would you say this is going to, this would help?
Well, if we, if we find a conservative four percent, the savings is upwards of eight hundred thousand dollars, so it's an eight times return.
So, you feel confident we're going to, it'll be four percent?
I'm guessing, yes.
Okay.
I'd like to think that the state found eight. I'd like to think that my team's on this pretty good, but there's, you know, there is opportunity for this to happen, so I'm estimating a conservative four percent.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any other discussion, or questions from Mrs. Miller? Commissioner Williams?
When this was bid out, are, is this company the lowest bid?
No, they are not.
Well, don't we typically look at the lowest bid?
We look at the scope of the services as well, and we had, we had two finalists come in, and the price was roughly eighteen thousand dollars difference between the two of them on this, this project. The scope of the services became very important, because this firm will go out and hold education meetings with our employees, and that was not calculated in the price of the other firm. Then in addition to that, this firm has that data capability, whereas the other firm did not. One more thing that's very important, this firm has a 24/7 call-in center, so our shift workers, our sheriff's deputies, our ambulance service people can call in on Saturday, Sunday, or in the middle of the night, and to get help on how to complete this audit, whereas the other one was a Monday through Friday with a seven-to-seven time period for their call-in. So, this was just a much better fit for our employees.
And your calculations on roughly the eight percent and the four percent is based on the old rules prior to the new healthcare plan, right?
Yes, but the initial things that come in to play this year on the, for this first year of the Healthcare Reform Act, the mayor was absolutely right. It just, it extends the time period that an eligible dependent can be covered, it does not change the eligibility rules specifically as relates to that dependent. So, we would have to extend the eligibility for an extra year, but we still need to know if that's an eligible dependent or not.
Well, I mean, don't, when we have open, I just don't understand why the process, we cannot get people's social security numbers, where we can check that and send out a memo to give people the opportunity to come off of the program if they're on there, to make everybody aware, like Commissioner Jordan was saying, some people may not be aware, but to make them all aware with a mailing and then, and then relook at that would seem to be the best, without having to spend a hundred thousand dollars to do this. And I know in the big scheme of things, a hundred thousand dollars is not a lot of money, but out at Rock Vale's a pretty good, pretty good chunk. So, I just don't understand why we couldn't do it that way and come up with a either-or plan as opposed to going through this process. But, since you've looked at the old numbers and not what, how this is going to affect on the new ones?
Well, again, I would, I would default to the explanation that the expertise to complete this is critical. We have not asked for social security numbers in the past. Our claims are based on the employee's social security, not on the member's social security number, and so that's just not been a data point that we've collected. The federal government is requiring that going forward, and it's difficult to get that. People aren't too excited about handing over the social security numbers to their dependents, and so this is another helpful tool to help us to gather that information.
Okay. Was any other question from Mrs. Miller? Mr. Farley?
Taking away the expertise side of it, with that alone, if your office was to do this in our office, how many, and I hate to say man-hours, because there are ladies in your office, but how many man-hours would it take as far as, basically per hour, we're paying those people, taking away from their other jobs versus also how much paper, time, all this stuff, how much would that cost close to this hundred thousand dollars?
Well, the costs, I can't tell you, I don't really, that's not a question that had, had occurred to me, because my folks are busy all the time, so it didn't, it didn't even, I didn't think that this was something we would want to complete in-house. We don't have the scanning capability, we don't have the electronic document capability to do this, so...
So, not only the expert side of it, the capability of actually going through the process, you don't have that, taking away from the employees doing their other jobs, so the hundred thousand dollars could be money well spent.
I think so, yes.
Okay, if I don't see any other questions from Mrs. Miller, you may be excused, and thank you very much for that good explanation. And while she's up here, I will echo, we're going to miss her expertise and her professional ability to guide us through some very, very difficult and important issues, and we're thankful for what she's done for these several years that she's been with us. Okay, we're back in regular session, we have a motion and a second on the floor to accept the recommendation of the Budget Committee. Is there any other questions or discussion? If not, then you're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
One yes, one no, motion passes.
Thank you very much. So, we have run past a little bit our time for our public hearing, and we do have one tonight, and Mr. Demosi will come forward while I will read this long list of requests here. We have a rezoning and conditional use permit request, number 10-A004 by Mr. Max Moss. This is located on Lebanon Pike, the existing zoning is R-15, and the proposed zoning is for services, and a conditional use permit for a long list of things that I'm not going to completely list, starting with offices, baker clothing, et cetera. So, they have covered everything possible, you might say, on a size, on a site here of about 5.25 acres, so I'll let Mr. Demosi give a little bit more explanation, please. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. This property is located along the east side of Lebanon Pike. The applicant is proposing to create a little over thirty thousand square foot of new office and retail space on two lots, which total a little over five acres. Attached in your agenda packets, you will see a list of different uses that the applicant is proposing for the site. You'll also notice on your tables that there is a bound copy of the applicant's application. I put one on each table for your reference as well. It contains most of the same information that you have in your agenda packets. Some of the uses that, as Mayor Burch has stated, there are a long list of them, but some of those include discount stores, gas stations, banks, among others. The proposed site are lots 62 and 63 of the Waldron Crossing subdivision, which was approved back in October 2007, also re-approved back in May of 2009. The subdivision plat has not been officially recorded at this point, and they are still putting the infrastructure into the subdivision. The applicant is proposing to build a fifteen thousand nine hundred square foot building on Lot 62 and two separate buildings, 5220 and 9360, with a cover canopy on Lot 63. The parking area would include curbs with asphalt paving, all site utilities would be underground. The buildings are proposed to be constructed primarily of masonry materials, including brickstone, and all mechanical equipment and dumpsters would be screened from view. The current building, just as, just talking about the site itself, the current building and parking arrangement, as shown on the concept plan at this point, would not provide adequate room for the new buffering requirements that were passed by the Board of Commissioners at last month's meeting. However, that's something that we can handle at the site plan review phase, not necessarily at the zoning phase, but that was just something, just for your information. They could, there are many options that they have that could help with bringing that into compliance. When this plat, and this was a discussion of, a pretty good discussion point at the planning commission, when the plat was originally submitted back in 2007, the main drive going into the subdivision, Waldron View Drive, actually ended out in a stub into the east side of the property. The Tennessee Department of Transportation, or TDOT, at that time was going to require that a turn lane be installed, a left turn lane, onto Lebanon Pike to handle the proposed lots plus any additional lots that may be created in the future. In order to not have to put the turn lane in, the developer redeveloped or realigned the subdivision, so that they took the stub street out. However, with the addition of these commercial uses, TDOT is going to look at this requirement again to see if the trips necessitated by the commercial zoning would indeed put that back up onto the needing a turn lane. There was a good amount of discussion about that, the planning commission. Ultimately, what the planning commission decided to do was basically require the turn lane if it was deemed to be warranted by TDOT. So, if TDOT looked at the numbers and said, "Yes, this should have a turn lane," they would install it. If they didn't, then they wouldn't be required to install the turn lane. This is within the North Area Land Use Plan, it does show the future land use of these parcels, it's mixed use, and it's right at the line between mixed use and low-density residential. It looks like most of the site falls into the mixed-use area. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you do have. I will say Mr. Jamie Reed is here representing the applicant, and this was recommended approval by the planning commission by unanimous vote.
While we have Mr. Demosi here, are there questions regarding this project that he can answer that you'd like to ask at this point in time? Okay, Mr. Demosi, that being said, we're going to then open this request up for a public hearing, and if we have those here that wish to speak for or against this project, please come forward, give us your name and address, and make your comments to us.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jamie Reed with SEC. I'm kind of going to go over the booklet that's on each of your desks, kind of reiterate some of the stuff that Doug just talked about. Like Doug said, we're requesting rezoning of the lots, the two lots, 62 and 63, from R-15 to services. The proposed uses of the site recognizes a commercial mix, which includes general retail, gas stations, and office. And in the booklet on Sheets 2 through 4, you can see some existing conditions and some physical features that we took as you're looking around the site that's currently under construction. As you go on to Sheet 5, you see the master plan that was approved, like Doug alluded to, it's the, was approved in the construction plans back in October of 2007. It shows the alignment where we've got all cul-de-sacs, all contained inside the subdivision. We go on to Sheet 6, you see the proposed buildings that we're proposing on the two lots. This is a concept plan, we're showing parking lots, landscaping, detention ponds, and the buildings on the two existing lots. As I go on to Sheets 7 and 8, we kind of go over some proposed site characteristics. These sites will all have curb and gutter with asphalt paving, there will be enclosures that will be required for each dumpster as well. At a minimum, parking will be provided to meet the cities, to meet the county's parking requirements. In addition, adequate room for the foundation plannings at the entrances to the buildings has been provided to soften the building footprint up front. The site is proposed to have three access points on Waldron View Drive and one existing access point on Lebanon Pike. The site will utilize CUD's step system for wastewater, and any on-site lighting that will be required to have no more than one-foot candlelight at the property line. Like Doug said earlier, all site, on-site utilities will be underground, all mechanical equipment is to be screened. The setbacks are front 80, side 10, and rear 20. We go over to Sheet 9, we look at some proposed architectural features. Maximum height of any of the buildings will be thirty-five feet, all the buildings will be one-story, and the primary material of the buildings will be masonry. The masonry will be, it's a brick, split-faced block, drive-it, stone, and/or cast stone, are some acceptable materials. The roofs can be architectural asphalt shingles or standing seam metal, trim and soffit areas are to be of metal, and the retail building and gas station building will have storefront glass, it will be at least eight feet in height along the front elevations. Go over to Sheet 11, kind of look at some of the landscaping that we're proposing for the site. Landscaping will be in conformance with Rutherford County's landscaping ordinance. Foundation plannings will be utilized to complement the building's architecture. All signs will be well landscaped to further enhance the site's overall... be well landscaped to further enhance the site's overall appearance and quality. The trash enclosures will be screened with brick walls, solid gates, and landscaping, and the HVAC units and transformers will also be screened and landscaped. And sheet 12 goes into a variety of uses, from office to retail to bank, to some health club, just some generic services. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer any, now with the booklet or proposed.
Okay, thank you, we will have to, do you want to suspend the rules and allow him to be, to answer questions, Mr. Johnson, is that what you want to do?
Yes.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
So you're moving that we allow the Commission to address Mr. Reed here with some questions? Do you have a second? All of you in favor of that, please say aye. Okay, continue on then, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if my question is for Mr. Reed or our county attorney. I understand that we've asked the state to give a judgment of the safety issue, whether or not we need to require a turning lane, but my question is, can the county, without the blessings of the state, put a requirement on this project to have a turning lane? Because we feel it's a safety issue. I understand, we don't own the road, it's a state road, but I feel like we have to take care of our own, our constituents, our taxpayers, and if a turning lane is not put in out there, someone's going to get killed. I mean, that's the bottom line.
Well, the question is, yes, you can require that, but like we did, we just did that one out at Clear Ridge, not Clear Ridge, yeah, Clear Ridge Drive and Highway 99, and the state come back in and said, no, you're not going to put it in because we're fixing to widen that road, and it's not warranted at this time. Here in this case, it's still not warranted, typically they require that if it's warranted, you put the left turn lane in. If it's not warranted, you don't put a left turn lane in. But to require a developer to put it in just because you feel that it's a safety issue is kind of stretching, in my opinion. Then you get into turn lanes, drainage issues, it's because you feel it needs to be a bigger, instead of a box bridge, you think it needs, you know, there's got to be warrants and limits and guidelines to go by. And if the state says it warrants it, we'll be glad to put it in, we're not saying, no, we won't put it in, but to put it in is going to cost what it would cost to do the development. So, and he redesigned his whole subdivision not to put the turn lane in there from the start, and knowing that this was coming up, the commercial out front, so he's taking all steps to try to avoid the left turn lane, dealing with the state. And we've already got an entrance permit to town, just like you see it here.
I understand your comment about the previous project, the state didn't want to do that at this time, they didn't want the people to do that at this time because the state's going to come in and widen the road.
Correct, but what happened, sir, the last time on that, they didn't make him put it in, and they're not going to let him put it in, but they made the developer bond the entire amount, not post a percentage of the bond, bond the entire amount as it's being built. So the guy, he walked away from the table owing money on his last sale on the deal, all because there was a left turn lane required when the state wouldn't let him put it in in the first place.
Well, I understand that too, but my point is, we have people traveling 231 every day.
Correct. That's what the warrants are for, that's why they say if it warrants a turn lane, then it warrants a turn lane. They said the same, you know, we need turn lanes and signals all over, you know, but if it does not warrant one, there's no reason to put one.
Well, without a development there, I agree that you don't need the turning lane because nobody's going to be turning in there. But when you put the development in, then that's going to cause a safety problem, there's no doubt about it. That highway is not safe to start with, especially mainly it's the speeds that people drive. People do the speed limit, it'd be better, but, you know, who does? Not many. But the bottom line is, we need to require turning lane to be put in. Whether or not the state allows it to be put in is not my issue. My issue, and my point is, I don't want somebody killed because we're leaving it up to the state to say we need a turning lane out there. I think it's our job, if we believe that, that there's a turning lane warranted, that we need to require it, and if the state won't allow it, then the state is knocking this development down, not us.
Mr. Johnson, I mean, all of that is perfectly clear, but Mr. Reed can't respond, I mean, that's, to that, except the way he's responded, so...
Well, that's why I started out, I don't know which one it's for, Mr. Reed or the county attorney, but our legality...
I think he's given us all the information he can give in that respect.
Okay, then I'm addressing the county attorney then. What is the legality of us requiring, and I understand that the state can still go ahead and say, no, you can't put the turning lane in, but can we require it and be within the law?
You can, as a condition of the approval, require a turn lane. If you put it in that form, and then the state does not allow the turn lane because it is a state highway, the state controls their right-of-way, if they don't allow a turn lane to be put in, then the project will effectively be killed. The way it's now worded is, that if the state determines that a turn lane is needed, warranted, then in that event, that would be a condition of the development, and in that case, as I understand it, the developer would agree to put it in. But, that's the answer.
But what you're saying, and what I'm understanding, is it's up to the state whether or not the turning lane can be put in.
That's correct, the state controls the right-of-way, they will either authorize or not authorize. You can say that the development will not be approved without a turn lane, and if you say that, and the state comes back and says, it's not warranted, we're not going to allow a turn lane to be built, then the project would not go forward, because in effect, you said, if TDOT won't allow a turn lane, we're not going to approve the project.
And I think the key is, in your statement, you said that would kill the project. If the state denied it, then our regulation that we have put in, or our stipulation, would stop them from having the project go forward.
Right, because he cannot meet the conditions of your approval. At that juncture, the developer could not meet the conditions of your approval.
Well, you know, it's not my, it's not my district, but I do live in this county, and I think we're all here to take care of everyone and try to do our best to protect and serve this whole county, not just our district. And I don't know the opinion of our commissioner for that district at this time, but to me, I don't want to kill any project, I don't want to do anything to kill any project. This is a fine development, there's nothing wrong with the development to me, except for, there's a good chance there won't be a turning lane. I would rather kill a development than to kill someone else, you know, on the street.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do we have other questions of clarification? Let's do not deliberate a decision at this point, we're not, right now, we're gathering your information. Mr. Sparks, do you have a point of clarification?
You know, I understand the Commissioner's concerns here, just wanted to ask, there's only one way in, one way out, is there any, y'all plan on expanding future development to the right or left?
No, that's why we didn't have to put a turn lane in first, we kept it down to a minimum amount of lots in there, and with knowing we would come back and do these commercial lines, we made them all cul-de-sacs. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir, yes, it's cul-de-sacs. The Commissioner's concerns here about traffic safety and so forth, if you had to require that, could you do this project?
No.
From a cost standpoint? How much, just off the top of your head, if you're talking 60 units?
This one was a speed, it's probably going to cost an upward, you're talking about the cost of the turn lane?
Yes.
Somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000.
Okay, and just the cost per home, how much would you have to add to that homeowner? If you were going to make it happen?
You know, we spread it out based on the number of lots through there, what is it, 60, 60 lots?
Roughly 60 lots.
So take $200,000, spread it out to 60 lots.
Yeah.
And so ultimately, who's going to pay is the homeowner.
Yes, sir. Well, one thing that we've got to balance up here, and the mayor's seen it, and all these commissioners have seen it, is, you know, you're risking your own capital, right?
Sure.
You're risking your own capital on this, or the bank is.
Yes, sir.
You're creating jobs, you're creating tax base.
That's right.
You know, you're creating these little, those little markets right there, there's somebody that needs to shop right there, you know, that'll have to come into Marfreesboro that can help keep that traffic down from, in downtown Marfreesboro. So there's an argument that could be made that it helps lessen the risk in the downtown area, because you've got shoppers going close by to their homes rather than have to drive in downtown. But I understand his concerns, but I think the big picture is, we're asking, this county has asked developers to do more and more and more, and you've got a development fee that's 1,500, you've got an impact fee for building the cities, your cost has gone up, and, you know, it's at balance. But, I mean, with, our planning committee at Smyrna was so slow, the first time in 20-something years, we never had a planning meeting. First time in 20-something years. And that just goes to show how slow this economy is, so, you know, with all due respect to Commissioner Johnson's concerns, I understand it, but there's jobs, you're correct, there's homes, you're correct, so my hat's off to you, you know.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sparks. Again, does anyone else have any questions that will help clarify the project? All right, Mr. Reed, thank you for your presentation. Now, the public hearing is still open, do we have other people that wish to speak for or against this project? And we have several people that wish to speak, so the lady on the front row there, please come forward, give us your name and address, and make your comments.
Hi, I'm Callie Nash, I live at 7861 Lebanon Pike, I'm catty corner from the project. And I was contacted, and this project was described to me as a community improvement. So if that's true, then why, when I went out and petitioned Juniper Drive, that nobody, there were so many people, that I knocked on their doors, and they said, what? Business? So why were so many people unaware of the zoning request to add businesses to the area previously zoned residential? At the previous meeting, the developer indicated that they typically get approval for residential portion first of the development, and then later they reapply for the change to business. Is this so the community relaxes its interest in the project once the initial approval is made, because everyone in the community now believes that it's only going to be housing? Obviously, many of us would prefer to see no businesses at all located on this property. However, knowing that the Commission has allowed similar projects in other locations in the county to proceed, we know that that outcome is improbable. At a minimum, we would like to ask the Commission to consider two things before making their decision. One, if you feel compelled to approve the zoning change, please restrict the business use in the development to lower-traffic businesses that will be quiet in the evening so that we may continue to enjoy our quiet rural setting, which is why many of us moved out there and don't live in city. This restriction should exclude businesses such as gas stations, convenience stores, and that like. Number two, to help ensure the safety of our neighborhood and community by requiring turn lanes. I live there, I know what the traffic is, it's crazy. There are approximately 68 homes on Juniper Drive, all coming out onto Lebanon Pike. You're going to put this subdivision with businesses directly across from that, they're in and out. So you add that, and you've got how many families, how many children are going to be coming in and out? There's, one of the ladies I talked to at petition, with the petition, said, her daughter just got rear-ended trying to turn into Juniper Drive. Oh, I have that, thank you. There are approximately 68 homes in Juniper Acres getting on and off 231. It can be very hazardous currently without the added traffic to the new businesses the subdivision will bring. The people who live here and drive these roads daily know that the consideration of turn lanes is a must. The volume of traffic of both car and heavy trucks, big dump trucks, coupled with the 55 mile-an-hour speed limit, creates a recipe for disaster waiting to happen. Who wants to be sitting stationary in a travel lane, in a car, trying to make a left turn under these conditions daily? As we respect the property rights of others to have their, use their property as they see fit, we ask the same consideration to be given to us residents of the community. There are several of our neighbors who have small businesses based in their homes that create no issue for us due to the volume base of their business. However, I do not think it is fair for the Commission to link a community, link a commercial property development to home-based businesses. Commercial properties are not neighbors. Thank you for your time and considerations. Do you have any questions, Guy?
No.
No questions for me?
Not unless someone wants to suspend the rules on that. Who else would like to speak for or against this? Please come forward, anyone that wishes to speak. Please give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is Amanda Eaton, and I live at 7896 Lebanon Pike, which is basically two houses down from the adjacent property that's being opposed. I do myself have a small business in my home, I have a beauty shop, which is just a one-chair shop, I've been out there for over six, about seven years now. There's never been an issue with me, myself, I don't work late, I'm not a business that's open 24/7, which my problem with this development is, granted, you know, we in the community do not want a commercial business out there. We are not even, I'm not even a mile from Walter Hill School, that is the Walter Hill Community, there is a strip mall already, we have two gas stations, one on Jefferson Pike, one at Crossroads Market, that stay busy all the time. The VA is not six miles from my home, there is a gas station on either side, a Walgreens. I don't see that putting this type of development right there in that area, which is a straightaway, the only straightaway before you get to cut off-road in Walter Hill School, that people do not run the speed limit, if anything, they're running 60, 70 miles an hour down through there. Me, myself, I have two small children, I take them to school every day, pick them up. I don't know about you, but if you want to see how the traffic is out there, you need to be out there around 7:15 in the morning, when everybody's trying to get their kids out to school, not to mention the buses, and Jupiter Drive, it is backed up. People are trying to turn and get out, people are trying to turn in. I, myself, have been almost rear-ended trying to turn back into my house in the mornings, coming back from taking my children. I think that if there is going to be some businesses out there, that it should be nine-to-five businesses, maybe, you know, insurance offices, something like that. On the, in the paper today, which I thought was strange, that today, of all days, the paper runs that Walter Hill is getting a new business. Why was that not put in the paper prior to this meeting? Now, as Mr. Moss has said earlier, when he got up here, this is going to cause, there's going to be a strip mall in the front, this is going to require businesses to take care of their trash. We already have BFI, I don't know if y'all have seen Jefferson Pike, but the highway is in terrible shape. Now, this is going to require more trucks to be brought in, 231, mainly in the morning or late at night, coming and picking up the BFI trash, which is a big service truck. If you have a gas station in there, you're going to have fuel trucks coming in, you're going to have Coca-Cola trucks supplying store, bread trucks, most of these people make their deliveries in the mornings. store, breads trucks. Most of these people make their deliveries in the mornings. I, myself, have children coming up. I have eleven-year-olds, fixed soon to be eleven. Won't be too many more years they're going to be driving. I don't want to think that I sat back and I didn't say anything or didn't even think about the welfare of our community and our children when the developer doesn't want to spend the money to put in a turning lane. That could cost him some money, but what if those are lives? What if it was your child going, living there, or trying to turn in and gets cranked? I've lived there over thirteen years. I can't count on my fingers how many times there's been wrecks. Right there in front of my home, Lifelight has had to be landed and take a young girl sixteen years old where a lumber truck, she came over, he hit her. You know, the girl luckily made it, but suffered for a long time. You know, I don't have a problem with bettering our community, but when it's at this cost of lives, like this gentleman up here said, I don't see how we can sit back and let that happen. And I was not even notified of this at the first meeting, or I would have came. They said, "I know that you're not required to send out zoning. It's a courtesy if you get one within five hundred feet." And several people that I talked to, I helped with the petition, and just people diagonal from it didn't even know about this, and were like, "No, I had no idea." You know, "Yeah, I'll sign it." When most of this stuff, when you're saying potential post office, banks, you know, all those businesses you're proposing are going to cause a lot of traffic. And the access, was this access approved prior, when this was supposed to be zoned residential? You said it was that, the entrance was approved, but was that prior to it going to commercial? And has the state been contacted about this? You were saying that if the state denied it, then, you know, if they didn't see that it was fit, then, well, have they even been contacted about the road? Do they even know about this zoning appeal that you're proposing? But that is, I am against it, and that is why, and I hope that our commissioners will take all this into consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Who would like to speak next for or against this? Come on forward. Well, let this next gentleman speak first. Can you have a petition to turn in?
Yeah.
Well, that, well, I can't, we can't hear you back here, but let's let the next gentleman speak first.
Good evening. I'm Charles Eaton. I live at seven-nine-three-five Lebanon Pike. I live next to Callie who spoke a while ago, was the first speaker, and I own the fifty-three acres next to this development. I own that property as well. And the concern I got is, and I'm not sure about these type things, but I have an environmental issue about the whole project. I don't know, I'm just a country boy, but on my place, next to this property, I have a boomshower. I don't know if you know what a boomshower is, but it's a large hole of water that just comes up out of the ground, and it's there all the time. Well, when it rains any amount at all, I have a picture here, I have an aerial picture of this, and I can show it to any of you who want to look at it. There's a large amount of water that comes across my property. And there's a big ditch here, and it comes across the end of this property that's, we're talking about today. Basically, they have built that corner up there three or four foot with big boulders. I don't know if you can see this or not. These are the boulders. This water, I don't know if you can see this or not, but this is my property. This is the ditch. You can see it. It comes down through here. And it goes right through this big, it did go right through this big mass of rock that's built up there. And then this, this water come down, it went down in front of this property. Then there's a great big thing, I don't know, tunnel that goes under the road. It goes, all this water goes across the road, and there's a great big pond over there that caught this water all these years. You've probably seen it as you pass by there. Within that water, somehow or another, it goes all the way down to the curve on Jefferson Pike and empties out into the river, which goes into the lake. I have a neighbor that lives in this house. He's here tonight. If we, we haven't had any rain much lately, but I'm just concerned about what's going to happen to his house when all this water starts backing up. This, all this property, my property, this property's been developed. The property across the road is full of sinkholes. I've run cows on this property. We've tried to fill some of the sinkholes with stuff because cows walking around over there. And so, what I'm saying is, there's a large amount of water under this property. My neighbor across the road lost a whole horse because there's a river that runs under this, under the highway, just where I'm showing you, and goes through his property, which goes to the river. And there was a large sinkhole there, as big as this room, and, and we could see where the hoofprints of the horse got sucked in, and we lost the horse. And when you look down in the ground where this sinkhole is, there's water about four foot from this hole, and it's just a river that flows there. And that's the type of property that's there. So, I just don't know if there's been an adequate study of what is going on here with this water. I just know there's a large amount of water. I can show you this aerial picture, anybody that's interested. I can show you this, this ditch, this boomshower is right up in here, and, and all this water comes down through here, and it comes across, it used to come across the front of this property, but it won't be able to do that now. I don't know what's going to happen with the property. The other thing, it's been mentioned two or three times. I've been living there now since nineteen eighty-five, and I've lived in the area my whole life. There's wreck after wreck on that road. I don't know how many wrecks there's been on that road. I don't know how many people's been killed right in that stretch of road. And I think people get too fast because it's a straightaway right there. I don't know what the reason is. We've got a school right up from that property, Walter Hill School's just a little ways up there. We've got another school down at the other end of the property, which is Wilson School, and there's a ton of traffic going to these schools every day. This is an older residential area. I'm older, you can kind of see, and, and the people that live there are used to having that type of setting. And, and I just hope that the commissioners will understand what's going on here. I think this is a big issue. I think this water is a big issue, and I just hope that somebody will look into this and, and see what I'm talking about. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for the time.
All right. Thank you, sir. Who else would like to speak? Please come forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against this project? Come forward, please. We have two more people. Both of you sort of got up at the same time. You can decide whichever one wants to go first.
Hello, my name is Jim Glanz, and I live at one-one-three Four Seasons Drive in the Juniper Acres subdivision. I am against this whole project. We bought our property out there like everybody else did because we wanted a nice, small rural setting neighborhood where we could bring our kids up and have a nice controlled neighborhood for our kids so we know where they're at at night. Before I came here, my daughters had a bunch of their friends gathered on my porch, and they all did not want me to come down here because they want a gas station, a convenience store there because they wanted to have it as a teenage gathering. Well, we all know what happens with that kind of stuff. And with that type of gathering, that means they will have to cross two thirty-one to get to that gas station and convenience store, and we will have a child killed eventually. That's guaranteed. I personally, myself, have had a screeching eighteen-wheeler behind me while I'm waking my turn, and I've had a car come squealing behind me. While you're looking in your mirror, you're helpless. We could look down the road, there is a Dollar General that they just put in. All of us who have gone to Murfreesboro occasionally, we know since that Dollar General went put in, how many wrecks have happened in that Dollar General. I don't have an accurate number. I'm sure there could be the police reports that probably tell us how many there are, but there was one day, I went down into Murfreesboro, and there was an accident. I went down to like Walmart. By the time me and my daughters got back, there was another accident on the way back, so we had to sit and wait again through all the traffic. And that was two accidents in just one day. Our, our exit to the property is straight across from this thing. It's going to be hard for us to get out to go to work in the morning. There's just no room for this kind of thing. I was not notified that this was going to be anything but residential, and I'm okay with residential. If we have to have businesses, it would be nice if we could have some state-type businesses, something that's not going to impact us. We don't need shopping. We don't need convenience stores. We don't need our children trying to cross the road to go have their gatherings there. We don't want to lose control of our children. We have buses going in and out every day, every morning with our children on there. It's going to be dangerous for the buses to come in and out. I'm just basically against the whole project. Houses are okay. That's why we all live out there, is we wanted the nice rural setting. And I ask all you commissioners to think if this was your subdivision, what would you want? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next gentleman, please come forward.
I'm Ralph Hackney. I live seven-eight-six-two Lebanon Road. My neighbors pretty well covered it all, except the fact that we have all those BFI trucks coming through there. Speed limit's fifty-five, and with, with a subdivision on one side and going on the other, we will get someone killed. The way I see black marks every day sat on my porch, count as many as three hundred vehicles an hour going both ways. And the speed limit goes from forty-five to fifty-five, less than a half mile from, from my house. And for some reason or another, people think they're supposed to speed up, and they do. And there's skid marks. My mother lives across the road, and there's skid marks from my house to her house about every day. So, I just think we ought to think about the safety thing. Thank you.
Please come forward, sir, and give us your comments.
I'm going to make mine short. I'm going to bring out the main things.
Tell us your name and address.
Lyndell Vaughn, seventy-three forty Lebanon Pike. I've been living there since nineteen-seventy-five. Oh, Mr. Johnson had a good point a while ago, just hit my mind. After you go by there, another half a mile, you're at the cutoff. Since I've lived where I live, I'd say it's been twenty people killed at the cutoff. They got no turning lane. And the reason it's bad there, and big trucks come around that curve. If they got seventy thousand pounds on them, they cannot stop. They ram into them and see traffic coming the other way, and they can't cut off on them. Cut off. That's going north toward Lebanon. That's where the bad, that's where most of them hit, right there, going toward Lebanon. And that's a fact. There will be people getting killed if it's not a turning lane. There's not no question about that. Now, I'm lucky. I live in front of the Church of Christ. I've got a good, good singer when I go out my side door. These folks won't be so lucky. I'm just two-tenths rummage, but I'm lucky because they build a church in front of my house. And we get on down there at Walter Hill, I'm a mile from down there to the other strip mall. It's got six units in it. Two of them is running. The other four are still for rent. They're still for rent. And of course, we got a dollar store. You know, I ain't got nothing against the dollar store. Then you got a beer and shoe rack store. Well, yeah, I have got something against that, but I can't probably do nothing about it. But if we move on down here and get the influence of these young people going into their malls, and, and the width they got that going in is not even, not even wide as one right across that goes into the other subdivision. They, it's, it's just like here, this is Lebanon Pike, where they talking about their subdivision. The width of going in there, what they've built, is not that tall. It's not that wide as the other. Now, I know what Mr. Eaton's talking about. I've run my cows down there the last four years. He's let me run them down there because he works hard, and he didn't have no youth. He let me graze it off, and I keep it clean for him. Down there where he's talking about that water, it is, yeah, it's, my cows drink out of it, unless it gets awful dry. And now, I'd say it's eight foot high. The field, the field, that's the reason this water he's talking about. And I don't know by no what he's talking about. He knows more than I do on that. I noticed a hole in there. I've been looking at fence a little bit. His cow got, I don't know, slipped off a hole. But it's going to come to the right away, which is maybe, you know, a hundred to two hundred more foot, the right away to the state, and the water's going to come right down through there because they got a field in, in there, and ain't nowhere else it can go. Nowhere it can go. So, it's going to be water problems. And I feel like if we already got one Walter Hill, and it's just a hundred yards from red light, that helps us. That helps us. That traffic's not moving as fast. Still wrecks there, but traffic's not moving as fast. But down there at the cutoff, where so many people has got killed, and usually when it happens, it's a big semi's where they can't stop if they're loaded. If, if they're not loaded, they might stop. Then again, they might not, they don't see anything. But we're going to be in the same shape right up there because it's closer to Walter Hill, and it's closer to some of the subdivision. All I can ask you, let's just use some common sense about it. I've farmed out there all my life, and I got a dog seventeen years old. And you know, when we quit cutting hay at sundown, that dog, that dog's ready to go home if I get him out there running. He's ready to go home. He tries to lead me out there. Then I'll make another round. He'll give up. Same thing. Next time, he wants to go home. Wants to get home before dark. So, these, you know, we got to take care of everything. And I don't believe, I don't believe this is going to help the younger generation out there. I can live with it. I done lived most of my life. I can live with it. I don't have to go down there. But I'll go to the dollar store, and I'll say the other five ever fill up, which one of them has, I probably won't go to none of them. Care nothing about going to no strip mall myself. I do, I come up here to town where I can look, have a better things to look at, more to look at. So, that's what I, that's what I got to say for it. Like I say, I'm a lucky man. I got a church in front of me. So, thank y'all. I appreciate you looking at this situation, especially about the water and the turning lane. lane.
All right, thank you, sir. Do we have others that wish to speak for or against this proposal? Okay, I don't see anyone else that wishes to speak. The young lady that has the petition, you can hand that to me and we will make note of your giving that to us. We're not going to let you read all the names. You can tell us how many are on there.
There's approximately 85, and I would expect that to be for acres or two acres if I could.
Okay, well, excuse me.
There's a lot of families that still are.
Make note that the young lady that spoke to us first has a petition here regarding this zoning resolution request that has approximately 85 people on here that are concerned citizens who urge our commissioners to act now to minimize the impact of this project to our community by restricting its use to lower traffic ventures that would exclude businesses such as gas stations and convenience stores, department or discount stores and such. Due to the high traffic volume of Lebanon Pike, as the main connector road between Murphysboro and Lebanon, along with its high commercial truck traffic, we would also request that turn lanes be installed at the site to better ensure the safety of our neighbors and facilities. That is basically what she expressed to us in her public comments, but we'll make note that we've received this petition. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak regarding this project, either for or against it? Okay, no one else wishes to speak. Therefore, the public hearing is closed. And now, do we have any motions concerning this proposed zoning request? Commissioner Black?
I appreciate all the concerns. My constituents are that way, and they brought up some very good reasons why. But I think with all their issues as far as the traffic, I think T-Dot addressed that and the developer when it comes to that time. They brought up about the some of the uses. I'd like to make amendment on the application about the convenience stores, the department and discount store. Them there seems like there are a whole lot higher volume of traffic will be coming in there other than the rest of them than the gas station, excuse me. Other than that, I'd rather, I think the other conditions is pretty much so low volume as far as the traffic. And I'd ask for this be approved with the conditions of the.
So Mr.? Planning Commission. Mr. Black, you've made a motion to approve this zoning request with the amendment to delete, let's be specific, which of those uses that you're suggesting be deleted. Department or discount store was one. Convenience sales and service.
Convenience, the convenience sales and service and the gas station.
And the gas station. And what about the department or discount store? Was that left in or omitted? That was removed, is that correct?
Removed that one.
So you have removed three of these requested uses. Gas station, convenience sales and service, and department or discount stores. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
Do we have a second to that motion? Commissioner Jordan. Now, discussion. Commissioner Farley.
I'd like for Mr. Demasi to address, I know Mr. Eaton had talked about the flooding Where our county engineer will look at those types of things.
Mr. Demasi.
Yes, Mr. Farley. As you stated, our engineering staff takes any drainage concerns very seriously. I will say that based on our research, that it's not in a federal flood area as designated by FEMA. That doesn't mean that there are not local flooding issues to be aware of. Whenever a site plan is brought in for review of this were to be approved and a site plan is brought in, they'll need to demonstrate to our engineering staff that it meets our requirements and that, you know, it's not going to be causing additional drainage problems on other properties.
Other discussion. Commissioner Phillips.
Doug, back in 2007, when this was originally approved, the residential portion of it was originally approved, was there a discussion, and I can't remember, a discussion that was that involved the commercial or use or development?
My understanding with the development is that it was always their intent to come back at some point to ask for commercial on that frontage, which is kind of why they left it the way they did. But at that time, they didn't ask for any zoning or conditional uses for that particular frontage area. But as I understand it, yes, there was always the intent to come back at some future time to ask for commercial on that.
That's what I remember back in 2007. There was the intent to use that front part for a commercial development, and it was approved knowing that that was the intent back in 2007.
Right, of course, the subdivision plat, they were just looking at the residential portion at that point. But, right, yeah, I mean, I believe you're correct, that that was always their intent at one point.
Commissioner Bullen.
Mayor, I just want a clarification. Are we taking one or two votes? He proposed an amendment. Are we voting on an amendment and then the thing, or is this just one vote?
He made a motion to approve this project as recommended by the planning commission with the exception of the removal of those three items in his motion.
So it's a one-vote deal?
One vote, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak? I think Commissioner Sparks, but Commissioner Jordan is up, and then you can go, Commissioner
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Demasi, I'm almost certain I know the answer to this, but I want to make absolutely sure. I watch all the meetings all the time. They're absolutely fascinating. I would assume that for this project right here, everything was followed. Signs were up, there was discussion. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make certain, because we've heard different than that. I just want to make absolutely sure that this, it'd be hard to miss, I see them up frequently, and be hard to miss that. Okay, I have another question. Words trouble me, and I'm going to, I agree with what Commissioner Black has said here about removing these three, and certainly, gas station, convenience stores are going to cause a considerable amount of traffic. What is a retail shop? That's, I mean, how does that, you can call anything, anything. And it says department or discount store, well, can a retail shop? That's not a department. Is there a difference in the zoning when you all discuss these things, when they come back to you? And while you're at it, specialty shop as well?
Looking at this list, and it's something that occurred to me looking at it, is that some of these things could probably be toned down to be lumped into the one category. For instance, you know, banks, I believe it was on here somewhere, yeah, banks and financial services, those really kind of fall under the same kind of category, if you will. Retail shop is generally something that's not enumerated anywhere else on a particular list. There may be shops out there that if you try to come up with a comprehensive list, you're bound to forget a couple of them. And this is kind of the catch-all, if you will, for those businesses that may not be on a specific list somewhere, but are still compatible with a zoning area. It is general, I will say that. It's general. And most of, a lot of these that you see on this list could probably fall under that category as a retail shop. But maybe it's a situation where it could be clarified or specified a little bit more than the way it is right now.
They do not come back to us and decide what they're initially going to put in any of these shops?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Do they come back to us and say, well, we've decided on lawn and garden and specialty shop? Do they do that?
The reason, and let me kind of back up just a little bit about the history of this particular request. This originally came in as a plan development, which typically they list the uses out there specifically. It's not a whole lot different than the process they're going through now. The reason they ended up going with the zoning and the conditional use was because with our new plan development regulations that we passed several months ago, it wasn't going to be able to meet the open space requirement. So we recommended to them, look, if you're still looking to do this particular project, your best bet would be a conditional use with the zoning. Now, typically what ends up happening is after the approval is made, they'll come back with their site plan. And even at that point, they may not know exactly what uses are going to go in there. They may, they have this list, but this allows them a little more flexibility. We've run into situations in the past before where, you know, someone's approved on a conditional use for a very, very limited amount of uses, and then things change in an area and somebody wants to put in a new business in that location, which could be very appropriate to the area. However, they have to go back through the zoning process, the time and the money involved in doing that from something that, you know, typically, if it just been on a more expansive list, could have been avoided. So I think that's kind of what they're trying to do here with this. I don't think I answered your other question about a specialty shop. Typically, when I think of specialty shops, what that indicates to me is a shop that sells a very limited line of products, say, wedding dresses or a wedding boutique or something like that, something, a very limited retail niche, if you will. That's really what falls under specialty shops.
Okay, I appreciate all that information. I want to bring up this turning lane again, and I'm not sure exactly what. To build this, well, I just feel that at least not request a turning lane is just irresponsible. I mean, I just really feel like that it is. Now, I'm not sure where we stand. I understand we've had a problem with another turning lane recently, that I probably shouldn't even address that, but the state was wrong in what they asked, that was in Commissioner Williams' district, the state was wrong. It'll be five years before they ever get to that out there to widen that road. That was just an excuse. In the meantime, I don't know what will happen. Well, I fear what will happen, as evidently Commissioner Johnson did as well. Well, I think we should request here, and if I'm in order to do so, may need a little help here, but I'd like to request that we at least request to the state that we put a turning lane in there. Now, if I'm out of order on doing that, I've been corrected many times in my life, so that'd be fine.
That condition is one that is listed, the first.
Yeah, if you look at the conditions that are on there, actually, the wording of it right now is, well, let me just read it.
So we're in good shape with that?
Right, it says if determined to be warranted by T-Dot, request the use of turn lanes on Lebanon Pike.
Okay.
So that's already part of what the planning commission recommended in their approval.
Let me go ahead and just ask for a point of clarification. The state can turn that down and not allow that?
Yes, they can.
And we don't know whether they will or not?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, Mr. Sparks was asked, then Mr. McAdoo.
Doug, just wanted to ask you, this amendment, will that slow down or dilute any of the traffic on 231?
What, with the, you mean with the subtraction of those uses? Is that what you're referring to? Well, each, I mean, you can have convenience markets and discount store, those kind of things. A lot of it depends on their size, as far as how much traffic you're going to get with them.
But the traffic on 231 is going to be the same, correct?
It's going to be the same, I'm sorry.
It's going to be the same, whether you got a convenience center or a Dollar General, the traffic is the same going down 231.
You're going to have, I mean, there's going to be the same amount of trips, I think, going up and down that road to a certain extent. Now, what may end up happening, I mean, you may see a small increase, but probably what's going to end up happening is a lot of the people who are already utilizing that road to go to the services a little further down or further up, however you want to look at it, will stop here as opposed to continuing further. So, I mean, this will create, you know, people coming to the, trips coming to the property. However, it might just, I would imagine a large amount of that would be people who are already in the area utilizing those roads.
I just don't see how the amendment, with all due respect to Commissioner Black, I don't see how the amendment really ceases the traffic on 231. To me, the traffic is the same regardless. I mean, to me, if you're against a Dollar General, then you need to be against the whole development, you know? A retail shop is a retail shop, you know? What was the vote at planning on?
It was unanimous approval.
Unanimous? Eleven member committee?
Yes, eleven.
Eleven member, okay. Well, on this T-Dot request, explain to us the process for T-Dot that you formally asked.
Yeah, before our planning commission, we actually had a conversation with T-Dot, just asking if this would, something like this would reopen their analysis of whether or not a T, excuse me, a turn lane would be warranted at this location. They indicated that, yes, that is something they would want to reopen that study, especially since they were going to approve it for a turn lane, they were going to require a turn lane when the subdivision was originally in the configuration it was in. But of course, they realigned it and took off the stub out.
If it has the warrants there, does T-Dot pay for the improvement?
I think the developer will be the one paying for it.
He will.
Yeah. But before the site plan, if this is, assuming this is approved, which, you know, I don't know what's going to happen, but if this is approved and the site plan is submitted to us, they will need to submit documentation from T-Dot, either yea or nay. Either T-Dot said, yes, they want the turn lane, or they said, no, they don't want the turn lane, before, you know, before anything else is done.
I just, and I appreciate the people's concerns that come up there and spoke, and if I lived over there, I'd be asking the same questions. I just, you know, I see the need that we have in this community. I see that here's our development, our development fund, you know? I don't know if people really pay attention to this, but in '03, '04, it was $5 million, over $5 million. This same time, it's $96,000. I mean, this community is hurting. I don't know if people really pay attention to what's going on. This community's hurting. There's people that don't have jobs. You know, I applaud Dollar General, and that's what I'm kind of hoping, what I see could come in there. It does provide jobs. A couple of retail stores, they do provide jobs. You know, the county complains about not having revenue because we don't have any commercial. Here you've got something with some commercial that's got some sales tax. You know, my heart goes out to y'all. I've got a picture of a young boy on my wall at home that was killed on Jefferson Pike. I talked to the mother and, you know, that picture's on my wall to remind me of that road that needs to be improved. And T-Dot strode their feet on Jefferson Pike. But also, when you see somebody that needs a job, I'm just telling you, people are hurting. I see it. And I see a guy here coming up wanting to make improvements here. I see potential development fees here. I see potential jobs. I see potential in the tax base here. You know, Proverbs says, "Wism will suit counselors." Y'all heard me quote that, I guess probably more than I should. T-Dot is saying it doesn't warrant it. The planning committee, which I have the utmost confidence in, we've got a planner All we have to look for is counsel, whether it's this mayor or other direction we get here, is counsel. We're not experts, you know? We can't sit there and pick things to death and worry about a sinkhole or this. That's why you have engineers that look at these things, that put their engineering stamp of approval on these things. I just think that the pros outweigh the cons on this, and I'd encourage you not to vote for this amendment. I just think that we're hurting ourselves. If we're going to approve something and you're going to limit all these things that have potential, it just, if you don't want that, then vote against the whole thing, because this just doesn't make, it doesn't make sense to worry about a Dollar General store or something when you've got all these other stores in here. The traffic is the same on 231 regardless. If anything, an argument could be made that you got less traffic going in front of the VA, going back into Murphysboro. An argument could also be made that our sales tax is going to stay more so in the county than going back to the city of Murphysboro. And I'm arguing that the county needs the sales tax more than the city of Murphysboro. I'm going to encourage you to vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Commissioner McAdoo.
I just want some clarification from the one that made the motion. The pharmacies that I've seen, I may be wrong, but the pharmacies that I've seen, they sell all kinds of goods and grocery items, so on and so forth, and they stay open 24 hours. Just want you to think about that, because the only thing I've seen that you've done by eliminating what you did was a gas station. Because the pharmacy, you know, like I said, it's like a general store now, so you may want to readdress that, but it's your district, but I would readdress the pharmacy being in there.
I got several lined up here. Everybody's going to get an opportunity, it appears. Mr. Johnson, and then, I sort of lost count. Mr. Jordan and Mr. Williams. All right, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We complained. We have complained in the past. We will. We have complained in the past, we will in the future, about unfunded mandates handed down from the state. Well, how ironic. We're asking the state to make a decision and hand it down to us whether we're gonna have a turning lane or not, and we have the power to put that in place tonight. We don't have to go to the state and ask them to put it in. We can make that a requirement, and it's up to them whether they wanna allow it to go in or not. So why do we holler about unfunded mandates and act like the state, you know, they don't know what they're doing, but just handing stuff down to us, and then we ask them to hand something down to us? It's been said that people will shop there instead of driving to the city. That's gonna make it a lot safer, because they're not driving to the city, they're gonna shop there, and hallelujah, they're gonna spend all this money there, and it's gonna save the world. It's not just about making the buck. The ones that shop there, the ones that are killed out there are not gonna shop anywhere else, because we don't put in a turn lane or require. Those people are gone. When they get rear-ended out there, they're gone. They don't have a chance to drive to town or to stop there either. Maybe they would've had a turning lane. That still won't save every life, but I guarantee you it'll save lives. We're talking about money. What's the price of a life? I will not try to put a price on a life. Will you? Commissioner Black, man, I love you, but I can't support you on this unless you ask that we require the turning lane to be put in, and don't leave it up to the state. It's still, in essence, is up to the state in the end, but to me, I'm asking if you would amend this to require the turning lane to be put in. Thank you. The reason I'm not amending it is because it's not my district, and I'm asking the commissioner of that district if he thinks that's wise. Otherwise, I'm gonna have to vote against it.
Okay, we have Mr. Jordan.
Well, I'll tell you, I had some reservations about this at Planning. I voiced them at that time, and I'm glad to see that we're... At least the motion does not have the department store, the convenience store, because that's majority of your traffic, in my opinion. My community, Mr. McAdoo, Walgreens, or CVS, or something like that, is more than the pharmacy. They are a department store, because that pharmacy's only a portion of what they've got. But what I wanted to ask, though, to Doug, to Mr. Jordan asked earlier, well, we've done turn lanes different ways in the past. From Last Castas Pike, if I'm not wrong, we asked for a turn lane if allowed by the state, and the conversation I remember in Planning was the state would usually allow a turn lane even if they didn't warrant it. And so, we could say, "If allowed by the state," and I think that's pretty much for sure, they'll put it in unless there's... Because there's no plan to widen 231 out there anytime soon. I don't think we're getting the same problem we've got in Rock Vale, because I'd like to see it widened, but it's not gonna be in my lifetime out there, I doubt. So if... The wording says, "If warranted by the state," but in the past, have we not, in some situations, said, "If allowed by the state." And if that wording was changed, this project wouldn't be dead, and we would still have a stronger push for the turn lane.
The wording that you had, and I've got, actually, I've got both of those here with me. The wording on the one on Last Castas Pike was, "Request the use of turn lanes with TDOT approval." And then, the one on Highway 99 was, "Request the use of turn lanes with TDOT approval to serve the site and Clear Ridge Drive." So, I mean, basically, the same...
The one on Last Castas said, "If allowed" or "if warranted"?
If... No, "if allowed." Request the use of turn lanes with TDOT approval. It just said, "with TDOT."
There's a difference in "if allowed" and "if warranted," because they may not quite think it's warranted, but they would still allow it.
Right, the one on Last Castas Pike, exactly what happened on that.
Yeah, they didn't think it was warranted, but we asked for it, and it's there.
Yeah, they actually called, and we had several discussions about it, about, you know, the reasoning for requiring it because they weren't going to.
We could say that, we wouldn't be killing the project, and we'd get the turn lane in there, in my opinion, but with the gas station, department store out, it's gonna be a lot less intrusive on that neighborhood, in my... You know, that's what I think.
So, Mr. Jordan, you didn't make any amendments. You just had discussion there, so you haven't amended the condition that's required.
I'll go ahead and make that motion. I'll make the motion to change the wording to add a turn lane, "if allowed by TDOT."
To require a turn lane, "if allowed by TDOT." That's one of the conditions. That's an amendment.
I'll say it.
And Mr. Black is seconding that amendment to that motion. Now, we can continue this discussion on the amendment first, then we can go back to the actual motion. Who wants to address that amendment that's just been made? Mr. Williams?
Well, it's about the turning lane. You mentioned, uh, for Doug mentioned a little earlier that, uh, and it's about the initial plans for this subdivision, the state said that it warranted a turning lane, and the developer goes back and removes some of the lots, so it was not warranted.
Well, it was more the connections than it was the lots.
Well, it's my understanding of how these turning lanes are warranted, they take a specific proposal that would be here, and they would estimate through various means of what other properties around the state have done, and see if there is enough traffic just specifically for this one development to warrant that. But the overall development, if it were all combined, would be a much higher number of warrants, because a friend of mine used to do this warrant and stuff, and I don't know that I understand it, except that they would count only for the specific development and not for the overall development. So a developer can essentially come in and divide the development up and not have to meet the warrants on the first part, and not have to meet it on the second part, but if they were putting all at the same time, it would meet the warrants. Is that the way you understand it?
Not exactly, no. No, not exactly. The... When we talked with TDOT regarding this particular project, of course, they were familiar with the location and everything because of the past history that it had. We specifically asked, is this... Would this reopen that evaluation as to whether or not a turn lane is required? And they said, "Yes, it would reopen that evaluation." So they're looking at the lots of the subdivision as well as the commercial development as what... Now, I don't work at TDOT, I don't pretend to understand the internal workings of how they do their traffic analysis, but at the same time, that was the answer given to us, that this would reopen that evaluation for determining whether or not a turn lane would be warranted at that location.
Okay, well, I just, on the amendment, I just support this because I think the safety issue is more concerned, and hope everybody else would too. Thank you.
All right, now, is there anyone else that wants to address the amendment? Then we're gonna come back to the whole motion. Commissioner Hall.
Doug, are we putting the cart before the horse? Why are we passing something through? Is the state gonna require our okay, this project, for they're gonna look at this?
I don't know if they necessarily require the approval. This is something that typically, again, before the site plan, would be finalized, because basically what they would have to do is send a list of those uses and the area, the development, to TDOT and say, "Okay, this is what we're looking at." So, I mean, if... It's up to them if they would wanna table this or defer this until they got a ruling from the state, but I don't necessarily know. It's not... I don't think it's necessarily required in order to take action on this application one way or another.
That's what frustrates me about the process up here at the county. I see in Smyrna, when they needed a red light, so they went to the state requesting, and we stand up here, month after month, approving projects that we don't have answers on, like we're bullied our way through. Why is not a deferment, we wait until state comes back and says, "A, B, and C, D needs to be followed in this, and then we got a plan we can vote on?" And it's not your fault at all, but it frustrates me that we're getting stuff shoved down our throat time and time again, clear back to the Bible park, that we hadn't got word back from TDOT. This has followed straight into 2010, and we're still not got word back from TDOT guys. If we're gonna sit and, as Commissioner Johnson said, beg them to tell us what we need to do, what are we doing? These people don't... Didn't know about it, they've showed up tonight, we stirred a hornet's nest up a little bit. Why is not a deferment? Why don't we just wait, see what they come back with, and go from there?
And that certainly is an option.
Is it... Are we under the gun? Is that why this developer's pushing this through and not waiting for TDOT to...
I mean, from my office's standpoint, there's no rush. I mean, now, you might wanna discuss that with the developer's representative, but I mean, well, whatever your wish is, we'll wait on this, or we'll continue processing it, or...
Okay, he's got nearly... If you count the whole development altogether, he's got nearly 80 parking spots and 60 lots. So if you said two and a half cars, we're pushing almost 500 vehicles for that side of the road. So if you add Juniper onto that, that's another 300, so you're at 800 cars for that one little area. And that's doing statistical 2.5 cars a lot. I hope y'all are taking note of that when we're asking TDOT to tell us what we need to do. I think that's common sense, that we should make that decision, tell TDOT what we need from them. Thank you.
Okay, we're still discussing the amendment. Anyone else wish to discuss this amendment any further before we vote on that? All right, we're gonna vote on the amendment. Excuse me, Mr. Jordan again?
All right, so on the amendment, we're voting on the amendment.
The amendment simply says, we have the motion, but now the amendment would change one of the conditions that came forth from the Planning Commission to, instead of the first one wording saying, "If determined to be warranted by TDOT, request the use of turn lanes on Lebanon Pike," it now says that the amendment is to require a turn lane, "if allowed by TDOT." We've changed that first condition to the wording that I just told you. That clear? If it's clear, please...
Real quick, what about Jack's amendment? I mean, are you willing to pull?
His original motion, we're not voting on right now. We're just voting on the amendment to the motion to clarify one point within those conditions. His motion was to approve it subject to all of the conditions as originally stated, with the exception of those three uses. We're amending his motion just to change it that those five conditions, the last four still stay in place, but the first one has been modified. That's all this is on this amendment. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes.
Twenty-one, yes, amendment passes.
Now, we're back into the discussion with respect to the original motion. Commissioner Jordan, did you wish to speak?
I still want to get cleared up what Doug said a while ago, when this gentleman come up and spoke about this water right here. What was your final outcome, miracles? That could be a concern right there, as much water, you know?
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Jordan again. And I'll reiterate what I said a couple moments ago. The... It doesn't show as being a federal flood on the FEMA maps. It's not a federal flood. However, again, that doesn't mean that there's not local flooding issues that we need to be made aware of. Whenever, if this is approved and the site plan is brought in, our engineering staff will look at that, where it's gonna drain, where the water's gonna eventually drain to, and I would encourage the gentleman, you know, if it gets to that point, to, or even regardless, to bring in any, you know, the aerials and the pictures that he may have to help us and to help our engineering staff look at that and better evaluate the situation with that development.
I'm sorta lucked myself a little bit here on this. If you go ahead and prove this, and then engineering, when they look at this, come back, then you got a water problem, where you gonna be at?
If there is a water problem?
Yeah.
Well, if there's a water problem, they'll have to solve the problem and demonstrate to us that by whatever it is they're doing, they're not making the situation any worse or even improving it. If they can't prove that to our satisfaction, the site plan just isn't approved.
Other discussion on the motion. Okay, there being no discussion, it appears you're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Fifteen, yes, six, no, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to the... We're returning back to our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee report. Commissioner Ely.
We are ready for item J2G, a resolution amending the health insurance summary plan document to include coverage for cochlear implants. Whereas Rutherford County's health insurance summary plan description currently excludes services for hearing aids and examinations for the fitting of hearing aids, with hearing aids being described as any procedure or device designed to restore or enhance the covered person's ability to hear, including but not limited to, audient bone conduction, electromagnetic, and/or surgically implanted devices. And whereas a covered member currently participating in the Rutherford County Health Insurance Plan currently has a cochlear implant to help recognize sounds and speech, and the implant is in need of updating, with the cost to update the cochlear implant being And whereas it is being proposed that the Rutherford County's summary plan description be amended as follows. No payment will be made for any charges for hearing aids and examinations for the fitting of hearing aids, including but not limited to, semi-implantable hearing devices, audient bone conductors, and bone anchored hearing aids. A hearing aid is any device that amplifies sound. And whereas the exclusion would not include cochlear implants, because they transmit sound, not amplify sound. And whereas the average cost of the cochlear implant, including surgery, fitting of external components, activating and programming of the implant and its microphone, speech processor and transmitter, as well as necessary adjustments and reprogramming and checkups, is approximately $55,000, with the estimated cost to Rutherford County being approximately $52,000 per year if the additional coverage is approved. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to amend Rutherford County's health insurance summary plan description by including the language stated above, "to allow for the coverage of cochlear implants." Resolve this 15th day of April, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion second from Commissioner Farley. Any discussion? Commissioner Phillips?
State employees, state plans, do they cover this? Are there any other counties that cover this? The cost could end up being tremendous for our county by doing this. We keep improving the plan, and I agree with that, but this, I'm not real sure that we ought to be addressing if it's not covered by other state plans, other county plans, and...
Some municipalities do. There is a mix. Metro Davidson and Smyrna do cover as part of their surgical benefit. Murfreesboro excludes the service.
The state?
The state. The state does not.
Commissioner Sparks?
How does something like this get initiated? Is it from a...
A claims appeal.
An employee that has a deaf child, I would assume?
Yes, yes.
Okay. How many... I mean, how vast is the need out there? Is it one request? Is it dozens of requests? I mean...
Oh, this is the only one we've... This is the only one we've ever had.
What are the other... I mean, if it's 55,000, what's... And we're only looking at one request, is there... What other options are out there for, say, this individual that has this issue? If it's one individual, I'm just asking.
What other options out there? I don't think there are any other options. Either you do this, or they don't hear.
Yeah. And the cost is... Yeah. And the cost is?
Two thousand?
What I'm saying is, if someone has a deaf child, and they need this, this coverage right here, how much is that cost for that, to rectify the problem?
The cost to our program would be fifty-two thousand.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, if you have, if you have a county employee who has a deaf child, and there's a need, because I'm assuming that this is, there's a need out there for this, someone has brought it to y'all's, your attention, what is the surgery going to cost, is what I'm getting, is it a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this person, this child? Is it?
Well, it says here the average cost of cochlear implant, including surgery, et cetera, is approximately fifty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. How much is the whole program then? I don't have, I don't see it right here in front of me.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sparks, I don't understand your question.
The whole cost of the county on it itself.
The cost to add this to our coverage is fifty-two thousand dollars.
Fifty-two, okay. And the surgery itself, though?
Is fifty-five thousand dollars.
Fifty-five, okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Schaefer?
In the budget minutes, it says that the total cost is fifty-five thousand with fifty-two thousand be responsible to the county, but then it also says, the costs are reasonably offset by the reduced necessity for speech and hearing therapy sessions. So there's, and there are things that won't be associated, you know, if this is done.
Commissioner P.
I actually was going to point out the same thing. When we looked at this in budget, I had the same reservation as you did, Commissioner Sparks, and after listening to Ms. Miller explain the savings it would have, if someone did have this problem and didn't have the surgery, then, you know, the speech therapy and all the associated costs are going to be this much, if not more. Two, this is a very rare situation evidently, so.
That's a point very well taken. Other comments or questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know who I'm addressing the question to, but evidently, we've had a claim, and it's been appealed. Now, whoever this is that had the claim, assuming, I know I would be, if I were in their shoes, just really praying that this goes through because I'm going to be covered, or my dependant's going to be covered. But since it's already, it's an appeal, we didn't have this coverage before, and then we, we put this, this new coverage into place, is there a possibility that it's a pre-existing condition, and that person's bubble has popped? I mean, they don't get the service anyway. I mean, I just don't want a false hope out there for somebody, because I think we should have had this coverage anyway. But I don't want anything misleading someone. I mean, someone should know. So they'd have a window to get the coverage. Thank you.
Okay, other discussion. I see no one wishing to speak, then we're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item J-2H, a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds. This resolution authorizes the mayor to determine if this refunding generates savings that would benefit our debt service fund, in fact, by reducing our debt service payments. And he will be working in conjunction with Mr. Sam Cruz, with the Stevens Group, who are our financial advisors for the county. And Mr. Cruz is here tonight and is available to answer questions if you would like him to. A resolution authorizing the issuance in one or more series of general obligation refunding bonds of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of certain outstanding general obligation bonds, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof, and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of, premium if any, and interest on the bonds, and repealing any prior resolutions related to thereto. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion, you have a second. Commissioner P, any questions or discussion? There being no questions or discussion, I assume you're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Eighteen yes, motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming, Mr. Cruz. But he would be available anytime. Any of you have any questions about some of this complex set of issues, feel free to let us know, and we'll make arrangements for him to communicate with you. We have no report from the Health and Education Committee, Property Management Committee, Commissioner Johnson?
Tonight, we have a resolution for a permanent slope easement and temporary construction easement. Whereas the attached permanent slope easement and temporary construction easement for road improvements from Rutherford County to the city of Murfreesboro provides for widening of Fortress Boulevard from Blaze Drive to the new Manson-Grissom Fortress realignment by the city of Murfreesboro. A copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit One and incorporated herein, excuse me, by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And whereas, it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County to execute said easement with the city of Murfreesboro. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials, being they are hereby and authorized to enter in, into, and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the attached permanent slope easement and temporary construction easement for road improvements with the city of Murfreesboro. Resolved this fifteenth day of April, 2010. I move to approve this resolution.
Seconded by Commissioner Gooch. Are there any questions or discussion?
One real quick question, Mayor. I think it's fifteen hundred feet?
It's several hundred feet, but it's inches along that fifteen hundred feet. It's just very minor adjustments to the curvature, I think, of one of those corners there. It amounts to not even but a tenth or two of an acre over all of this, okay?
Well, I noticed it was, the price was ten dollars, and I was like, man, if it's fifteen hundred feet, and then it's, I didn't know how deep it was, but it just said fifteen hundred feet, and I'm like, ten bucks? Come on now.
It's just, go ahead, Commissioner.
That ten dollars is just legalese that is used in any instrument of transfer, just to represent that there's some value. It's actually not a ten dollar payment. It will be a donation by the county, but as the mayor's pointed out, it's basically a slope easement. That's where the toe of the improvements tie into the road, and it's really very insignificant.
Very insignificant, yes, sir. All right, we have a motion second. Any other discussion? All right, all of you in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you, sir. You want, while Mr. Johnson is here, he wants to make an announcement.
Being that there's no business or new business to come before property management this month, the April twenty-second, it's Thursday, April twenty-second, meeting will not take place.
All right, thank you. Make note that the next property management meeting will not be held. Commissioner Bullen?
Chairman, Mr. Mayor, I was unavoidably out of the room when you voted on the refinancing. Is any way that my positive vote can be added to that list?
I will make every effort to see that that happens. I-
Just note that he would have voted, and that reflects in the minute, can't change the vote, though.
We can't change the vote, but we can make a record within the minutes that reflects Mr. Bullen's has returned and requested that, had he been here, he would have voted positive.
That's the way to do it.
Thank you, sir. Now, let's see. There's no public safety committee report or steering report. Now, Mr. Jernigan, Public Works, please.
Public Works and Planning Committee's got two resolutions tonight. The first resolution to approve drainage easements, twenty-nine seventy-four Midland Fosfo Road. Whereas pursuant to the private act authorizing Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. The attached Exhibit One are the easements recommended by the planning department. Whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the planning department. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approves the attached list of public drainage easements, Exhibit One, as submitted by the planning department, in accordance with Tennessee Code Anodya five four dash nine oh three and five four dash nine oh four. The public drainage easement shall be the only public drainage easement which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolved this fifteenth day of April, 2010, I so move.
Seconded from Commissioner Williams. Any other discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, the second resolution is to approve the litter grant with the state of Tennessee for litter removal of state highways. Whereas the attached contract by and between the Department of Transportation, state of Tennessee, and Rutherford County, Tennessee, for litter removal activities on state highways, a copy of said contract being attached hereto as Exhibit One and incorporated herein at length as if set forth verbatim, is the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials far and on behalf of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to enter into and execute far and on behalf of Rutherford County contract with the Department of Transportation, state of Tennessee, for litter removal activities on state highways within Rutherford County. Resolved this fifteenth day of April, 2010, I so move.
Seconded, Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All of you in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Is there any other business to come before this body? We have, let's go with Commissioner P, please, first.
I'd like to remind everybody and invite them out to Kitchell this Saturday for the fire department's Country Hand Breakfast between six and ten. That's the seventeenth. Thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Sparks?
Just wanted to inform the community, the CADCOR, Community Anti-Drug Coalition of Rutherford County. Their next meeting is April the twenty-first at three PM at Murfreesboro Housing Authority at four fifteen North Maple Street. If anyone wants to get involved with this, with this group, what they're, what they're doing is, they're trying to bring people and organizations together to improve Rutherford County by reducing substance abuse, crime, and violence. I noticed Chief Glenn Christmas on here, Ms. Paula Barnes, Tom Sage, and other fine folks in this community. But if people want to get involved with helping to fight the drug abuse problem that's, that's expanding and overwhelming this community and other communities, get involved with CADCOR here, eight nine three ninety-four fourteen. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Another happy time the next time we get together, as it always is. Remember, I told you in our last meeting, and congratulated the Riverdale Girls on beating Mount Juliet, and told you they would be state champions, and indeed they are. And they were, will be with us next time, and we will be honoring them at that time. And since three of you have already asked me tonight why they weren't here tonight, I thought I'd get that in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other business to come before this body? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.